Representative.
Hi.
You have four minutes to address the council.
Thanks. Well, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, thanks for having a guest here. I'm Jim Walsh. I'm a state legislator representing the 19th district. But I come up here this evening with good news. You have the chance to do something great. You have the chance to stand with your firefighters in the city of Redmond. And welcome back professional, dedicated employees who look out and protect the well-being of your people every day. This is not a unique opportunity, but a rare one, and I encourage you to take it. Increasingly, we know that the vaccine status of public employees is of little impact to the greater public health issues of the city of Redmond, of the state of Washington, or any other place. As we've moved past the COVID outbreaks, we are at a place and a time now where a person's vaccine status more than ever is a matter of their medical privacy. And whether an employee chooses to disclose status or not should be respected as a matter of that privacy. So what you have the chance to do here is the right thing. You have the chance to recognize their training, to honor their professionalism, and to avoid the trap that some government entities and local governments have fallen into of gutting and dividing their essential services. Please don't do that. Bring back the full complement of your fire department. Restore that professionalism and that integrity of the services you provide to the people of Redmond and do the right thing. I beg you to do it. You will be the heroes in this story if you reunite your department. Please do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tracy Robillard, and I am here to highlight 11 dedicated City of Redmond employees who have exemplified what it means to live lives of public service. Battalion Chief Tom Langton, husband and father of four. April 1990 through October 2021, forced to retire after serving the city of Redmond and its citizens for nearly 32 years. Battalion Chief Mark Frameth, husband and father of four. April 1990 through October 2021, forced to retire after serving the city of Redmond and its citizens for nearly 32 years. Paramedic LaFawn Davis, wife. August 1993 through January of 2022, forced to retire after serving the city of Redmond and its citizens for over 28 years. Lieutenant Brian Robillard, husband and amazing father of two. September 1993 through October 2021, forced to stay home and facing termination after serving the city of Redmond and its citizens for over 28 years. Lieutenant Matt Peterson, husband and father of two. September 2006 through October 2021, forced to stay home and facing termination after serving the city of Redmond and its citizens for 15 years. Lieutenant Allison Halifax, wife, mother of two. October 20-- excuse me, October of 2007 through October of 2021, forced to stay home and facing termination after serving the city of Redmond and its citizens for 14 years. Lieutenant Josh Frye, husband and father of three. January 2009 through October of 2021, forced to stay home and facing termination after serving the city of Redmond and its citizen for nearly 13 years. Lieutenant Scott Carlson, husband and father of three. January 2009, and terminated yesterday after serving the city of Redmond and its citizens for over 12 years, excuse me, 13 years. Firefighter Davin Olsen, husband and father of two. June 2009 through October 2021, forced to stay home and facing termination after serving the city of Redmond and its citizen for over 12 years. Firefighter Tyler Parnell, husband and father of one. January 2015 through October of 2021, forced to stay home and facing termination after serving the city of Redmond and its citizens for nearly seven years. Artem Teterin, husband and father of one. September 2015 through October of 2021, when he was terminated after serving the city of Redmond and its citizens for six years. These heroes were served-- excuse me, these heroes served the city of Redmond for the first 20 months of the pandemic without hesitation, and they were forced to stay home because of the mayor's executive order. Do you know that these guys and these ladies would still be on the job if they worked for just one of these other departments within our state? West Pierce Fire, East Pierce Fire, Central Pierce Fire, Vancouver Fire, Tacoma Fire, Bremerton Fire, Clark County Fire and Rescue, Island County Districts 1, 2, and 3, Spokane Valley Fire, South County Fire, North County Fire, and I could go on. It's here in our state on this side. This is just a small, small sampling. Counsel, at this time, I'm asking you to save these heroes' jobs and overturn the mayor's executive order. If you're here to support any of these firefighters, will you please stand and show your support?
Good evening. My name is Davin Olsen, Redmond firefighter. Just over one month ago, on March 1st, 2022, Councilmember John Stillen, who served on council from 2010 to 2017, stood before you in public comment addressing the July 19, 2011 vote that allowed Emerald Heights to rezone their property to allow for increased supply of senior housing in Redmond. In his address, Mr. Stillen stated, and I quote, "That was a tragically uninformed decision." Mr. Stillen later learned in a sidebar meeting with the mayor and your attorney, Mr. Haney, that the city council could have requested a development agreement from Emerald Heights. But Mr. Haney, quote, "Never informed the council of critical information and discussions that had taken place prior to the rezone vote. The council was never informed what transpired in these backdoor discussions," end quote. Mr. Stillen also stated the following, quote, "In her King County Superior Court decision, the judge wrote, 'It is unclear to this court why the city council failed to require a developer agreement to maintain the existing buffers and require density to be at the heart of the Evergreen Heights campus,'" end quote. John Stillen said, quote, "I wish I could have just jumped out of my seat and yelled to the judge, 'Ask Mr. Haney. He knows why,'" end quote. As you heard a month ago from Mr. Stillen, this significant problem where your mayor, department heads, and attorney are having backroom discussions without your knowledge and then further making decisions without your input is inexcusable. This is exactly what has happened today. Your firefighters, all of them, have shown you with countless email evidential support that our granted reasonable accommodations were revoked by Mayor Bernie's executive order, and the council was largely removed from the decision-making process. This is not how city government is designed. The mayor's executive order has led to excessive overtime, poor department morale, and a financial burden that will trickle down to the taxpayers that we have all in this room sworn to serve and protect. The fire chief may tell you that overtime has increased, but been manageable. Seasoned veteran Redmond firefighters can attest that there has been more mandatory overtime in the past six months than there has been in the past 30 years combined. The chief could also say that new hires are soon coming out of the academy, which is true. But how do you replace over 200 years of experience that was forced to leave the fire line abruptly before the vaccine mandate took effect six months ago? Redmond has already lost over 100 years of combined veteran firefighting experience due to the mayor's decision on September of 2021. Unless the mayor's executive order is rescinded, 99 more years of experience will be thrown away. How is this in the best interest of the citizens of Redmond? John Stillen concluded in this manner, as will I. I urge you, counsel, to ask a lot of questions about matters that come before you. Do not naively assume the city attorney or staff have provided all the information you need to make sound decisions. Investigate problems brought to your attention. You are elected to represent Redmond's best interests, so now I ask that you act in the best interest of Redmond. Rescind the mayor's executive order. Bring your firefighters back to work. Allow us the honor of continuing to protect and serve the citizens of Redmond. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Lieutenant Josh Frye. On February 28th, 2020, I was on duty at Station 17. I'll never forget hearing from the MSO that he had just received a call that our employees were confirmed exposures to COVID-19, having performed high-risk airway procedures at the Life Care Center of Kirkland. The days, weeks, and months that followed were full of unknowns. We relied on our policies, best practices, and training to continue providing the citizens of Redmond with the world-class service they know and expect. The global COVID-19 pandemic did not change the ability of our first responders to provide safe and effective emergency response to the communities they are sworn to serve. It did not change the effectiveness of our PPE designed to protect responders from the deadly infectious diseases we risk encountering every time the tones go off. It did not change the ability of the fire service to innovate and adapt our daily routines to reduce the risk of bringing highly transmissible and infectious diseases into our firehouses or back home to our families. The availability of a vaccine for COVID-19 did not change the ability of the Redmond Fire Department to continue providing world-class service to the citizens of Redmond. Myself and this group of firefighters that are in the audience hold sincerely held religious beliefs that prevent us from receiving the available COVID-19 vaccines. The city of Redmond has acknowledged our beliefs and provided us with exemptions to the governor's vaccine mandate. Federal law requires that an employer make every effort to accommodate an individual with an approved exemption unless it causes an undue hardship to the employer. The federal government has provided employers with guidance specific to COVID-19 vaccine mandates that defines undue hardship as a direct threat to the health and safety of themselves or other employees. They further define direct threat as a significant risk of substantial harm that cannot be eliminated or reduced with reasonable accommodations. I ask you, the Redmond City Council, what has changed between October 17th and October 18th to make my PPE no longer effective to eliminate or reduce a virus? What changed to make daily symptom checks and pre-shift testing no longer effective? To make decontamination and social distancing no longer effective? All of these practices were remarkably effective at keeping the fire department fully staffed and ready to respond to the citizens' calls for service for 20 months of the pandemic. Suddenly, on October 18th, when a mandate for vaccination went into effect, these inexpensive and common infectious disease prevention measures became ineffective to accommodate the religious beliefs of a group of employees who could not receive the vaccination. Councilmembers, I thank you for all the care and attention that you have given this matter over the past several weeks. Thank you for the hours you have put into digesting the countless studies and articles that we have provided regarding COVID and vaccinations. I know it's been overwhelming at times to get caught up on the events of the last six months, but I thank you for your efforts to see the facts and uncover the truth. I urge you now, uphold the law. Save the careers of myself and these outstanding Redmond Fire Department employees. Allow us to continue providing your constituents with the world-class service that they know and expect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, City Council. My name is Frank Dahlquist. I'm a captain with a neighboring agency--
Just a moment. Sorry, setting the timer. There you go. There you go. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, City Council. My name is Frank Dahlquist. I'm a captain with a neighboring fire agency. I'm here in support of the firefighters here, the vaccinated members that are losing their jobs. We have, as you know, a service that risks everything. When we walk through the door, when shift happens, at any moment, we're asked to risk everything, and we're a highly trained staff. These members here are being subjected to undue persecution because of their religious or medical issues that they have, and they've asked for an accommodation. And I'm asking the board here, the council, to revisit their accommodation requests, to place them back on the job, and respect their religious and medical exemptions. Now, we have this opportunity before us. What we knew before, when COVID first arrived, it's changed, and I think we can all agree with that. What we knew about the vaccines before has also changed. And now, you know, Dr. Fauci and NIH and CDC have all recognized natural immunity. We've recognized that the waning effects of our COVID vaccines. And I would assume that most of your staff right now may not have received a booster. And unfortunately, with that, you also then do not qualify as being vaccinated any longer. So now, right now, there's no difference between a vaccinated and unvaccinated member. And we need to reevaluate how we're moving forward. I think as a community, we can heal, we can move past this. It's time that we can have good, open dialogue on how we can bring these valued members back to our communities and provide them the opportunity to continue to serve. And that's what I'm asking for you today. Have a resolution that brings our firefighters back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. My name is Dan Jackson. I've worked at Redmond Fire since December of 2020. Prior to that, I worked at Mercer Island Fire for five years and was a special forces medic for 12 in the United States Army. I came to Redmond Fire in search of opportunity. What I found was a motivated department full of amazing professionals that brought me into the family with open arms. A group of professional men and women that are virtuous and morally just. I've been blessed to work alongside them, get to know them, serve with them, learn from them, not only professionally but morally. Redmond Fire is looking at losing over 200 years of combined experience. To put that in perspective, we have 11 recruits in the academy with no experience. That will take all of them over 20 years to reach the knowledge and experience that we are about to lose. As you know, school cannot adequately prepare you for a job. It takes experience. You can look at the fire service as an apprenticeship. You're about-- you're going to fire the journeymen and foremen and replace them with apprentices. I can tell you from combat, the lack of experience equates to soldiers and innocent civilians dying in war. It is the same here, but the stakes are higher, as this is in our own community, your families and ours. Financially filling the positions with overtime has the city hemorrhaging thousands of dollars daily when we have able firefighters willing to work. The financial cost daily and monthly by leaving these amazing firefighters at home and backfilling with overtime is costing the city thousands, and I would like you to consider where that money would be better spent. This is a calling. It is an honor to do this profession, and it takes a special kind of person, somebody willing to sacrifice their lives for another. I chose the fire service because, like the military, firefighters would sacrifice their lives for people they don't even know. I would like you to take a look at the firefighters in this room, vaccinated and unvaccinated, and I'd like you to listen very carefully. Every single one of them will rush into your burning home and sacrifice their lives for you and your children. Let that sink in. They would rush into your burning home and sacrifice their lives for you and your children, and they wouldn't think twice. Six months ago, many of us had our hearts ripped out as we lost our brothers and sisters. The emotional and mental devastation that this has caused us has been tremendous. This career already scars us, takes away-- This career already scars us. To take away a family member and not consider the impacts has crushed morale. I'm here humbly asking you to reconsider the mandate. It has been lifted from all over the state and the country. Neighboring departments have accommodated non-vaccinated firefighters and allowed them to work on the line. Please make our family whole. Do it for us. Do it for them. Do it for your families. Do it for the community. We all need them back. Thank you.
Next is Tom Frye, then Dan Jackson, then Frank Dahlquist, then Bob Yoder.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I have a little bit of a fear of talking in public, and with the emotions of this issue, if I don't finish, I want you to know that if you-- that the firefighters are quality people, and if you allow them to return to work, they're going to make a big difference. And if you were to fire them, their lives are going to be devastated. I'm here to ask the council to allow unvaccinated firefighters to return to their jobs. Over the past weeks and months, you've been giving overwhelming evidence that this is the correct decision. Rather than reiterate these facts, I want to take a completely different approach in the standpoint of compassion, caring, and community. But first, a little bit about me and my family, so you can understand this in context. I've spent 26 years of my years working as an engineer in Redmond at Rocket Research, just currently Aerojet Rockodyne. I left that career to start a lavender farm here in the Sumamish Valley. My wife is a labor and delivery nurse at Evergreen Hospital in Kirkland and works side by side with vaccinated and unvaccinated nurses doing direct patient care. Our three children went through the Lake Washington schools. Our daughter graduated from WSU and is a veterinarian in Woodenville. We are so blessed that all of our children and four grandchildren live within eight minutes of us. This is our home. My wife and I can't fathom not having Josh and his family near us and being closely involved in the next phases of our children and grandchildren's lives. One quick story about having our grandchildren so close. We live at the farm. We do a few weddings in the summer. And my granddaughter Stella likes to work with me, and I love to work with her. She is the best weeder ever. She's also very smart and aspires to bigger things. She lives so close that recently she came to my office in her pajamas to work with me. During her visit, she made her business card that says wedding planner. I think she's kind of getting tired of weeding. She told me that she wants to be my wedding planner during the summer, when she's just a little bit older. She's now six. So if you're thinking of getting married and need a wedding planner, this is the business card she made and gave me. Of all, all of these firefighter families have stories like this. It's not a stretch to see a future where Josh lost his job, had to sell his house, and relocate. This has happened to other firefighters. We see every night on the news how stresses like this cause financial struggles, relationship problems, and worse. Your decision can have a very different effect on these families. At one end of the spectrum, returning them to their jobs will refocus them on their families, community, and careers. We need more families with strong moral foundations to focus on family and community. We should be supporting and nurturing families like this, as they will undoubtedly help others in our community. The other extreme is firing them. This would likely have very devastating impact on their lives and our community. The stress on relationships, their children, and loved ones will be huge. We all have seen problems, the problems this causes. Please do the right thing and allow unvaccinated firefighters to return to their jobs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, before I-- Rose Marie Ives, former mayor of Redmond, 1992 to 2007. And mayor before, I'm not starting my testimony yet, because before I walked in this door, I was going to say that these agendas are so full with--
Ms. Side, I am starting your time, because you have the same amount of time.
Well, then, I will start, but you should try to accommodate these firefighters, and you ought to put-- Things, circumstances have changed, and also I see two of my favorite cops here, so you might have to pull me out, because I'm probably going to go over the four minutes now.
Thank you. I'm going to pause for just a moment. I know some people are getting a little squirrely, and I know you want to get to the new business, but if the door opening and closing is a little distracting to hear everything that's going on in our business meeting, but if anyone wants to, like, hang out outside there with some smaller people, and then I'll have one of our officers come get you when we get to that, if that works for any of you, I'm happy to do that, just in case you feel like some people would be happier not sitting here for about probably 20, 30 more possibly minutes till we get to that, just to let you know. Happy to do that for you. Happy to send Brian out to get you. Okay. And I promise, we're going to get to what you all here are for, so if anyone's out there and wants to come back in, that's great. I don't mind, and the kids are fine. It's just the door opening and closing is very loud. I don't know why, but we can't fix it, so I don't know if anyone wants to come in. We have no unfinished business, and we don't actually have anything item on the agenda for new business, but Councilmember Fields has something that he would like to bring forward.
Thank you. Yes, I move that the City Council present a resolution to the mayor to rescind the vaccination executive order for first responders, firefighters. I can read the resolution out loud?
I can read it into the record. I have it in front of me, if you wouldn't mind.
Not at all.
Text the revolution, whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has been an incredible strain on first responders across the United States and around the world, and whereas the first COVID-19 SARS-CoV-2 cases in the United States were responded to by Redmond and Kirkland firefighter EMTs, and whereas the Redmond Fire Department has had chronic overtime issues with obvious budgetary impacts, but more importantly, increased strain on valued personnel, and whereas losing experienced and talented firefighters, EMTs from the Redmond Fire Department will continue to add to the stress of our fire service, and whereas Redmond firefighter EMTs have performed their duties for two years by taking pandemic precautionary measures to prevent transmission to vulnerable populations, and whereas current and substantial scientific studies of medically accredited institutions have determined that vaccine effectiveness had conclusively demonstrated the benefit of COVID-19 vaccines in reducing severe disease and hospitalizations, however, the impact of vaccines regarding community transmission of SARS-CoV-2 among vaccinated and unvaccinated is not significant. Whereas the affected firefighter EMTs have received exemptions and deserve to be accommodated by a combination of testing and proper masking to protect the patients they serve, just as vaccinated firefighter EMTs should be accommodated based on their potential for public transmissibility of SARS-CoV-2 during the first responder duties, and whereas Washington State has no COVID vaccine requirements for EMT licensure, and whereas King County Make-A-One's program, Medical Act, or Dr. Thomas Ray Letter regarding EMT personnel and COVID vaccination is a recommendation on a requirement, and whereas receiving a vaccine is a personal decision that is undertaken by consulting one's unconscious, informed by worldview, religious beliefs, and/or medical professionals, and whereas the elimination of one's livelihood by the city of an employee's private medical decision should be considered with the utmost carefulness and reliance on current available scientific data to determine if potential harm to the public welfare is threatened. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Redmond City Council, that the executive order requiring vaccines of Redmond firefighter EMTs be rescinded, and be it further resolved that any firefighter EMT terminated after January 1st, 2022, due to this policy being reinstated at their previous rank and pay. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Fields?
Thank you, Mayor. So, please bear with me for a minute. I will be quick. But this, as somebody said earlier, is a very emotional issue, and I also will have a difficult time getting through this, because I have spent a long time thinking about this and talking to some of the impacted firefighters and listening to your testimony, and I know I know what I think is right, so I'm going to lay that out as quickly as I can. I recognize the decision that the mayor made some months ago was difficult. There was limited and fast-moving information, emotions were very high, and there were serious consequences, both losing valued and treasured firefighters stacked up against the needs for public safety and public health safety. I feel like my family was on the forefront of the COVID-19 pandemic. We own a business. We were shut down. We lost our income. I was calling the governor's office once a week saying, hey, you know, you can shut down, but what about mitigating the impact on small businesses? So when they started talking about a vaccine, I was very hopeful, and I just wanted to hang on to our business so that someday things would go back to normal. I also lost my father-in-law, who couldn't get an intensive care bed because it was full of COVID patients. And I have a nephew who's an intern in Las Vegas, medical intern, and he has watched dozens of people die of COVID, and I've had many conversations-- And I've had many conversations with him. I also have a daughter who is a leukemia survivor and spent months very isolated to stay away from endangering her health. So I had very strong feelings. So when the vaccines became available, we all thought that we no longer were a transmission risk. I had friends who would say, yeah, come on over. Did you get a vaccination? And I'd say, yeah. So we all got together and so, and with family and friends. Well, that quickly changed. Data became available that I was just as likely to transmit COVID-19 as someone who wasn't vaccinated. And that data has evolved over time to the point that it's negligible and maybe statistically not meaningful, that if you're vaccinated or unvaccinated, you pose the same risk to the other people in your community. And the current data is very clear. The impact on our community, the impact on our city, the consequences of people losing their jobs, their families, their healthcare, these are something that I can't ignore. I can't ignore in good conscience. This is an issue of practicality, but it is more for me an issue of conscience. I want the city to do the right thing, and I heard testimony asking the council to do the right thing. So given the fact that accommodations, both for vaccinated and unvaccinated, will yield the same results, we need to, to be as careful as you all, you all being the firefighters out there, have been and intend to be. And, and I see no reason, even though I don't necessarily agree, I am vaccinated, I am boosted, my family is vaccinated, those are my choices. Even though I don't necessarily agree with your choice, I respect that choice, and I also respect the fact that it is not creating a, a health risk for the public that you serve. And I ask my fellow council members to examine their, their own consciousness, consciousness, whatever that is, their values, and, and come to a conclusion that, you know, let's do the right thing here. Enough's enough. We, the pandemic has inflicted a lot of pain. Why are we continuing to inflict pain on one another with no, no benefit? So I respect and admire the work you've done. I respect and admire your willingness to come back to the city, and I, I hope that tonight will resolve that.
Thank, thank you, Councilmember. I just want to correct a little bit of erroneous information you just shared. So I just looked on the King County dashboard, and according to it, in the last 30 days, if you are unvaccinated, you are seven times more likely to test positive for COVID, you are 40 times more likely to be hospitalized for COVID, and you're 32 times more likely to die of COVID. And so I just want to correct the record on the, some of the, in fact, some of the information that was shared that was, was not correct.
So Mayor, I appreciate that. However, I never said that there wasn't a higher risk, a higher risk for the individual who is not vaccinated. In fact, in the resolution, I mentioned that, and I will reread it if you don't mind. So I didn't, in fact, share false information because I never said what you just described. What I said was, it is conclusively demonstrated the benefits of COVID-19 vaccines in reducing severe disease and hospitalizations. That's, that's been borne out. What you said is true. What you said that's not true is that I said that. However, the impact of vaccines regarding community transmission of SARS-CoV-2 among vaccinated and unvaccinated is not significant. So yes, you are taking a personal risk by not being vaccinated, but you're not posing a community risk.
Thank you very much. I want to start just by saying thank you to everyone who has come and shared their stories with us, and to recognize the really incredible service that each and every one of our firefighters have given to our city over time, and just to be able to express that appreciation for, for the work that all of our firefighters have, have done, especially during these, this really challenging past two years. And I have listened and thought about this, and also talked with other current firefighters, as well as community members, and listened to as well dozens of community members that have written saying that they want to make sure that they know they, that they get a service, health service from the city, that they are getting the highest level of protection as possible, and weighed all of these different factors. And I cannot support this resolution. First of all, I disagree on that particular clause on the, the whereas around whether there's an impact of vaccines on community transmissions. There's substantial data out there showing that, that being vaccinated does affect a level of transmission. It's part of the reason that we have a rollback right now of things like mask mandates is because we have a high level of vaccination in our community, and, and that's a huge piece of it. And I do want to address the issue that this is in the past, just because we've had some changes in regulations. It, this, this pandemic, unfortunately, as much as we wish it would be, it's not over. Entire countries in the last month have shut down due to the BA2 variant of Omicron. And I think our community does rely on us as their leaders to be able to look broadly for our 73,000 residents at what are the best public health, best practices we can do? What are the scientific practices that we can follow? And listen to scientific professionals that tell us what, what is, what are the best practices there? The governor's mandate at the state level has not been rescinded on vaccines, on vaccines for public health workers. And for me, in thinking about the responsibility, as a city council member who cares deeply about looking at data and science in the way that, that we lead, I think it's very important for us to be able to, to follow that, especially when, although we have heard examples of other fire departments that have decided to allow, or, or other healthcare areas that have decided to allow people who are unvaccinated to work there, I don't want to tell our residents here in Redmond that if they lived in any one of the 38 other cities in King County, when they are in a moment of crisis and they have a firefighter come to come help them with their medical needs, in every one of those other cities in King County, those firefighters have to be vaccinated. And I don't want to tell them that only in Redmond they wouldn't have that protection, especially for those who, when they're in their most vulnerable state, they may have children under five who are unvaccinated, even if they wanted them to be. I know personally, because I have a daughter who is in that position, and I'm afraid for her every day. And, you know, I don't want to have to tell that to people who are immunocompromised. I want to tell them that we have done what we can to ensure that as they get their care, we've given them their best shot at having this support for public health. Again, truly respect the compassion from my fellow council members wanting to bring this up, and I hope you can understand my compassion and appreciation for all the work, for, for all of you, and a respect for exactly what your philosophy is on this. But I think as city leaders, it's important for us to maintain this policy in our city, and I will be voting no on this resolution.
Councilmember Carson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I, I do support this motion. We are in a much different time than we were six months ago, and we, I think we know a lot more. We've seen a lot more data come in to, to deal with some of the questions that we all had. I think back in, going back real quickly to, to 2020, when we didn't have any vaccines, when we, we were hopeful that a vaccine would, would tame the coronavirus and, and basically, you know, turn things back to the good old days where we could all be together and, and not worry about infecting each other and so forth. And that, you know, that vaccine was developed. We had high hopes that it would be something that would prevent transmission. It doesn't do that. It also doesn't live up to the hopes that we had that it would keep you from getting sick at all. We all, you know, I was vaccinated, and I, I got COVID in, in December and into, long into January. And, you know, it's, it's, it's a pretty significant issue to deal with medically when, you know, I have some underlying conditions that could be really real serious consequences for me. So, but at the same time, we hope for all those things. The only thing that came out of, of the virus, sorry, the vaccine development is it's, it's shown to protect the individual from a serious case. And, you know, I wouldn't want to have not had the vaccine onboard myself. That's my own choice. Again, I, it's, we, none of us has the same identical medical history, so it made sense for me to have a vaccine. Other people are different. I'm, I'm virtually the only one in my family that's vaccinated. So we, we had high hopes for, for the vaccine that have not been borne out. It, it does not protect from transmission. It doesn't protect you from getting it. It just basically mitigates some of the symptoms. The second point I'd like to make is that back in, in September, when this was issued by the mayor, there weren't any departments that were, well, there were few, if any, departments, and certainly none in probably the metro area that were allowing firefighters to not be vaccinated. But that's changed significantly when I think they, I think a lot of departments saw the writing on the wall. They, they saw what it was going to do to their workforce. They saw that they were not going to be able to meet the mandatory minimum staffing requirements that, that all departments have. And so they, they rethought that this policy because it, it simply doesn't live up to the billing. And I think lastly, the last point I'd, I'd make is that terminating employees under this executive order will have a substantial impact, financial and morale, to the city of Redmond in, in the form of firefighter and firefighter overtime, increased training costs to train up new firefighters that will replace them. And, you know, it's, it's almost certain that we will have to defend this position, which, which I think looks less and less defensible. So, and I mean legally. So, you know, I, I just, I can't support the policy continuing the way it is, and so I will be supporting this resolution.
I see your hand just a moment. Do you want to comment on this? Let's see. Councilmember Fields?
So, yeah, I, I want to comment on a couple of things that council members have said. The, one council member had said that she doesn't believe the data about transmissibility. There was a study from the CDC in Texas. There was a study by Israel, which is very well-received and very well-respected. There was a study in California. These are all accredited. I don't think there's a whole lot of debate if you actually do the research on the public health community and the medical community. In fact, the doctor, my nephew, that I mentioned is the one, even though he was really angry at people who didn't get COVID because he had to watch, or get the vaccine because he had to watch them die, he is the one that sent me most of those studies and said that we need to relook at the mandatory vaccination. And it's, it's, I believe it's actually dangerous to rely on it. The other thing I would say is, I would be proud if the city of Redmond is the only city in King County that, that did the right thing. So if the other cities don't want to consider this, that doesn't influence me. And there, I think that the issue is the effectiveness of the executive order, and it's not doing what it was thought it was going to do back when it was done. It's time to make a change. I asked the mayor two weeks ago. I didn't get an answer. You're going to hear from the city attorney soon, I believe, on whether we actually have the power to rescind this. All I can say is, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I will be direct. I believe clarity is kindness, and I will not be supporting this motion tonight. My, my take on it is a bit different than the take that's been offered so far, and that's why I'm raising my voice. I, I'm always, always, always going to be hesitant to interfere in a staffing issue because, because I don't believe that that is council's jurisdiction on, on an average day. The guidance that council has received, legal guidance, I should say, to this point, backs up that there is quite a bit of risk and complication should this decision be So because it is, because it is a staffing issue, that's my number one hesitation, as I weigh many of the other factors. I, I want to say to the advocates, I know what it feels like to lose because I've been an advocate myself. And so if you don't prevail tonight, I do hope you keep going on the issues that are important to you because that is how together we make progress. And if we're not able to, to do that together tonight in that way, I would just encourage you to go forward because I've been very impressed by how comprehensive you all are if this was a decision that I could, could wrestle with on, on your side. And lastly, I will just say, you know, members of this body have the privilege to not attend meetings in chambers due to the ongoing impacts of the pandemic. That's not something that we can ever extend to our firefighters or other first responders. So, so once again, I will be voting no on this motion. Thank you.
Any other comments this evening? Councilmember Anderson?
Thanks to the folks in the audience for your service. I stand with the Redmond firefighters and honor you, and I do not care one bit if you are vaccinated and if I am dying in my house. I am proud of you. I appreciate you, and I thank you for the invitation to participate in overturning executive authority, but she is 1,000% within her authority, and I can agree with you, and I can also vote against this measure. So at this time, I would like to make a motion to postpone this measure indefinitely.
It's been moved and seconded to postpone this indefinitely. Councilmember Anderson, would you like to speak to that?
Yep. I think this, Ms. Stewart mentioned a couple of these things, and it is my advice to the council to remain neutral in personnel matters is respect to the audience, as well as to the council and to the positions that we hold, and to the community in, in general. If this matter does become legal in nature at some time in the future, it's very confusing to me to look at the, the timing as, that's proposed, as well as understanding the impacts either of the mandate itself, what that consideration was, and then what's going to happen going forward. forward. My advice is to remain neutral, and one of the ways we can do that is by postponing this matter, and if we need to take it up in the future, we certainly could.
Councilmember Carson?
Thank you. So I, I don't support this postponing it indefinitely because firefighters that are at risk of losing their job don't have an indefinite amount of time. I, I concur with, with Councilmember Anderson's initial statement where she says, vaccinated or unvaccinated, I want you to come and take me to the hospital if I need it, which Redmond Fire has done on two occasions with me. So I, I have experience with this, and one time I didn't even get my pants on before they showed up, that's how quick they were, which was a little bit embarrassing. So I, I, I don't see how kicking the can down the road does anything for the issue or for those at risk of losing their livelihoods in, in our city. So I will not be supporting this.
Council Vice President Kritzer?
A question for Mr. Haney, or perhaps our clerk. Is there a substantial difference between postponing indefinitely and voting down this, this resolution?
Mr. Haney?
I think the, excuse me, I think the answer is no. The motion to postpone, or the, excuse me, the motion to, voting down the resolution would require a motion for reconsideration if you were to want to bring it up again at some future date. The motion to postpone indefinitely postpones the matter and essentially kills it. So it, it has the same net effect, but it's not, it doesn't bring it back on reconsideration. And perhaps the city clerk has, do you have anything additional? Does he? Okay. Does that make sense? Good.
Point of order, Ms.?
Point of order, yeah. So the motion postponed indefinitely is a majority vote, is that correct? And can you clarify if we need two-thirds to overturn an EO?
No, a, a motion to postpone indefinitely is a majority vote.
Okay. And then can you also confirm it's a two-thirds vote to overturn it in executive order?
No, I think you're thinking of the motion to take from the table. Is that correct, or is it, do you recall if it's a two-thirds majority on the motion to postpone to overturn it?
I think in the legislature it is.
I don't recall.
I think she, I think she's asking to overturn my executive order, do we need two-thirds to do that?
I'm sorry, are you asking whether overturning the motion to postpone indefinitely takes a two-thirds majority, or are you asking if overturning the mayor's?
In the main motion?
Executive order?
How many votes are needed for the main motion to pass?
The main motion being?
The resolution?
To the resolution. A resolution can be passed by a majority of the council.
Okay, thank you. Is the resolution enforceable if it is contrary to RMC 2.02?
In my opinion, the answer is no.
Thank you.
And I can elaborate on that if you would like.
Thank you.
You know, first I want to say that I understand that what I'm about to say will not be popular with many people who are in this room, but it is not my job as city attorney to be popular and to give you popular opinions. It is also not my job to give you opinions relating to the science, as I'm not a scientist, and it's not my job to give you opinions relating to the effect of firefighter vaccinations on the fire service, or on the operations of the department, or on any other policy matter. It is my sole job to give you legal opinions, and I give those as objectively and as fully as I can. In my opinion, the resolution that has been proposed is not authorized under the Redmond Municipal Code. And that is so because the city council has, under the Redmond Municipal Code, specifically Chapter 2.02 of the Redmond Municipal Code, the council has adopted the Personnel Manual and the personnel rules contained in Chapter 2.02 as the working conditions of all of the city's employees. There are certain exceptions to that, but the firefighters do not fall within those exceptions. The city code also provides, or excuse me, the Personnel Manual that's been adopted by the city code, provides specifically that the city is to reasonably accommodate individuals with sincerely held religious beliefs, and that the city is to reasonably accommodate individuals with disabilities. That is a requirement of federal law, of state law, and it is a requirement of the Redmond Personnel Manual. The Redmond City Code says that the mayor is the administrator of the Redmond Personnel Manual. And it says that the mayor shall administer the manual and administer the rules under the personnel system. All of the provisions of Chapter 2.02 and all of the personnel rules, quote, "not specifically reserved to the city council." The way that I read the Personnel Manual and the code is that the mayor has the authority to administer the Personnel Manual, and particularly to administer the reasonable accommodation provisions of the manual, and that the council has not reserved, either in the code or in the manual itself, the authority to override the mayor's decision and to make reasonable accommodation decisions itself. And for that reason, it is my opinion, under the municipal code, that the council, or that the council does not have the authority under the code to override the mayor's decision. And again, I'm not opining on the policy, whether anything is a wise decision, unwise decision, I'm simply telling you what the code says, and legally, it says that the, this is within the authority of the mayor to make that decision. I would also say that even if the mayor's decision or executive order were overridden, there is still the obligation under the governor's proclamation, Proclamation 21-14, which the governor recently reaffirmed on March 23rd with Proclamation 21-14.4. And that proclamation says that firefighters are to be vaccinated, they're defined as people who are working in a healthcare setting. That proclamation also requires a number of other state employees to be vaccinated, and it also requires certain other city employees to be vaccinated. It requires that city employees who work in the Parks and Recreation Department and who provide educational services or youth programs, they are required to be vaccinated. So it's not just firefighters, there's a number of different people who are required to be vaccinated. The proclamation also says that in each case, there must be an individualized determination and assessment of an individual's request for accommodation and whether or not the city can accommodate, and it says that the city must accommodate unless there is an undue hardship. So that's essentially what the mayor's executive order says as well, is she directed in the executive order that the Human Resources Director was to meet with all of the affected employees who were requesting a religious accommodation, and to make an individualized assessment of that accommodation request, and to make decisions relating to those accommodations. So the mayor's order is consistent with the proclamation of the governor, which remains in effect. So for that reason, in, in my opinion, the council does not have the authority to rescind the mayor's executive order, and even if it did, we would still be in the same position, having to administer the governor's proclamation, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields?
So we're a little bit off of parliamentary procedure here, but I'm okay with it. I do have a question for the attorney. Can the city council vote tonight to urge the mayor to rescind her executive order? Is that within our authority?
Yes, the council always has the authority to express its opinion on any issue and to urge the mayor to take certain action. It just doesn't have the authority to require her to do that under the current code.
Okay, thank you. So I am strongly against Councilmember Anderson's amendment because that takes, it affect, I mean, the city attorney expressed it very well, it basically just puts it in a black hole and no further discussion. I think that some clever council member could amend the basic amendment, some experienced, clever council member, to urge the mayor, and, and she would then know the majority of the council's opinion. So following parliamentary procedure, we have the amendment to postpone, I urge the council to vote no, and then we move on and see if there is any amendment. Thank you.
And it's actually a motion to postpone indefinitely, not amendment.
Correct.
Councilmember Anderson?
Sure, I'll speak to the motion to postpone indefinitely, and again, caution the council not to take a position for or against any staff, especially specific ones, since at a future time they may take up a case where we are supposed to stay neutral on their behalf. Just like it was her choice to put the mandate in place, the mayor can also choose to remove it. It is better if you do not take a position on the record. And in our rules of procedure, according to the duties of a council member in matters of administration, the first role is input, and it is if it is requested, and I do not recall her asking for our advice in this matter.
Councilmember Carson?
Thank you. Well, I would say this is a policy matter that, not, not simply a personnel matter, that the council does have the purview, and I, I find it incredible that a, that the council could delegate the responsibility for the, the manual, but not see a specific policy in the manual that, that potentially the council disagrees with, and not take some remedy to, to change that policy. So I'm, I'm kind of at a loss to understand exactly the totality of Mr. Haney's position on this, because to me it seems pretty clear that the, the council has the policy purview, and if, if the council has been silent on an issue, on a policy issue, and then the mayor, any mayor, creates an executive order that, that, that basically fleshes out a policy, and the council disagrees with it, I, I can't imagine that it would not be the council's right to, to take on that, that policy and change it. So maybe you can explain kind of my, my conundrum there.
Mr. Haney?
Yeah, what I would say is this, is that the, as I understand the motion, it is not to amend the Personnel Manual. And if you were asking to amend the Personnel Manual, yes, you can amend the Personnel Manual, the code does say that. Your amendment would have to be consistent with state law and with federal law, and currently the Personnel Manual says that the city has an obligation to reasonably accommodate individuals with, with sincerely held religious beliefs and with disabilities. So the manual is consistent with state law and with federal law. The mayor is administering the manual, and at this point, you have not provided in the manual or in the code any process whereby the council, whereby the council makes personnel decisions, or would say that we disagree with the mayor's specific position on an individual accommodation, which is what the mayor's executive order and the manual requires, and we therefore overrule the mayor. That's, that's not, that's an administration of the manual. If you want to amend the manual, you do, the council does have authority to consider amendments to the manual. I would suggest that you would, that if you wanted to amend the manual, that you would want to look carefully at what amendment you wanted to make, and make sure that that is consistent with federal law and with state law. But I, I don't think I'm saying anything different from what you are, you have the authority to amend the manual.
Council President Forsyth, I saw your hand up, are you, did you not have a comment? No? So the motion on the floor is the motion to postpone indefinitely? Any more discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote, starting with Council President Forsyth?
Aye.
No.
Aye.
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 No.
And motion to postpone indefinitely passes 5 to 2. That concludes our business items for this meeting. If there is no objection, we are adjourned.